Way of background, I do want to share that the last time we looked at these regulations was in 2008, and that was after a discussion with the Policy Committee at the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, in the background, the Chamber is through that Policy Committee looking at a variety of things that may be issues for businesses. But this one was specifically occasioned by a request from Holiday Station Stores. The Planning Commission did recommend the ordinance that's in front of you tonight unanimously, and as I indicated, Holiday Station Stores is in concert with the recommendation this evening. But again, if you have any questions for them, they're here as well. With that, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Councilwoman Whiting?
I'm assuming that alphanumeric in Holiday Station Stores' respect would be like the signage for the price of gas. I think, and that can change once every minute.
As I recall, this ordinance does not specifically address the pricing signs. This refers to changeable message signs, whether they are monochrome or electronic message centers. Typically, those pricing signs do not change on a frequent basis, so that wasn't the intent of this modification.
But it could be an alphanumeric type of sign.
It could be an electronic alphanumeric sign that shows the price, and probably in many cases is already.
So that can change every one minute, and the other, the monochrome, can change It's hard to follow, that's why.
Yeah, I understand that. I think if I recall correctly, the intent is that both kinds of signs can change every minute.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor and his counsel. Just so we're clear, Michael, the, it says the alphanumeric sign may not change more often than every three minutes.
Actually, I'm looking at ordinance 859 on page two, item 1B, which says may not change more often than once every one minute.
Okay.
So the ordinance would allow both types of electronic signs to change no more than every minute.
Okay.
More questions? Councilman Lehman?
How close to the highway, driveway routes can a sign be, can a sign be located?
Two answers to that question. If it's a new sign, you would have to comply with the existing setback requirements for freestanding signs. The second answer relates to those existing commercial areas where we may have existing signs that are legal nonconforming. They can contain message center signs, whether monochrome or electronic message center signs, that have that current setback, so long as they don't increase the nonconformity of the sign with respect to either setback or sign area. So we do have properties where the setback is not currently met, presumably will not be met, but for any new sign, the existing setbacks would have to be met.
But they won't be able to go larger in size if they're a current nonconforming?
That's correct. Specifically, the ordinance still says if you've got a legal nonconforming sign with respect to size, you can only replace the panel area that you currently have.
What is the reasoning for, that, for once every minute? I mean, it seems very arbitrary that it's once every minute. Is there any data to back up that reasoning, or is it just because we feel like once every minute is a good number?
Actually, there was a lot of discussion about information that's available about sign change. There's some work that we've in the past provided to the Planning Commission from the Federal Transportation Administration. It really is not on point. Mr. Cronin and Holiday Station Stores brought information from their industry. Their initial request was for it to change every 30 seconds. The concern about more frequent than, than, than every 30 seconds, even though there are communities where signs change more frequently, is if you get multiple signs in a corridor or so, for example, First Avenue, it can be very distracting to traffic. To be candid, in the last two meetings of the Planning Commission, we had planning commissioners and the applicant who had a wide range of opinions about how frequent it should be. The applicant clearly had requested to change every 30 seconds. We had planning commissioners that were thinking that was too much and five minutes was appropriate. After we reviewed the information that was provided and the alternatives by the applicant and the concerns of the planning commissioners who were looking for a larger one, we proposed something that we thought was a substantial change over what we currently have, but if you will, a compromise on those positions.
Any other questions for Mr. Leek? Would the gentleman from Holiday like to speak? Do you have anything you want to say?
I under, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
I was going to ask what the difference of a monochrome sign is in the electric message centers.
Do you guys have any pictures? Come on up, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Michael Cronin. I'm here representing Holiday Station Stores. I'm joined by David Quest, who's their manager of real estate. The difference is, is that the, is that, is that, is that the monochromatic signs are the signs that you see a lot of in Shakopee. You see them probably at, at, at the high schools. Churches are beginning to use them. What they are is they are bulbs against a dark background that can spell out letters or, or numbers. That's why they're called alphanumeric. This technology, which is the electronic message center technology that is, as your staff pointed out, is a change, we can do colors. So these are signs that Holiday is now using throughout the area. The difference is, is that we're not held to orange against a black background, or red against a black background, or something like that. We can use a variety of colors, which makes it much better. We can, we can, we can, we can, we can do a curve, because, because the pixels, these are, these are LEDs, they're very tight. We can do a curve, so it's a much higher quality graphic image. We can show bananas that people recognize as bananas, you know, it's a, which, which makes it a much more effective sign if we can show a graphic in a word. We can actually reproduce a Coke bottle. So that's, that's, that's the advantage of the, of the, of the technology. That's what separates them.
And this ordinance sets out that these will all be static images, correct?
These will always be static. We've, 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 we've always talked about the no dancing bananas rule. Is that, once, once the message goes up, it's static. It changes in a snap. It doesn't wipe, it doesn't starburst, it doesn't dissolve or anything like that. The idea is for both a, a, a compatibility reason and everything else, is to just have it as a series of static messages. So you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't know it's electronic in the sense it's not moving at all. It's just click, click, click.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, any discussion? Another from Councilman Lehman?
Technology's cool.
Councilman Clay?
Wonder if anybody would like to lay a wager on how many months it'll take before this is back in front of us. The ordinance will be inadequate and we'll have to change it again.
To what?
To something more intense, larger signs, more changes per minute, per second. It's, there's, I'm convinced that for any business, there is nothing that can't be fixed with a larger sign. And if we just keep slowly changing and changing and then loosening up our sign ordinance, we wind up being just like Wisconsin Dells, where you can't see the buildings for the signs. It's, it's an extreme example.
That's a bit dramatic.
Yeah, and that's probably at least, you know, 10 years down the road.
All right.
The way we're going, but as I said earlier tonight, I'm the sign ordinance curmudgeon on the council. It's, I think the sign ordinance we have is, is just fine, if not even a little bit too liberal.
Councilman Lehman?
The problem I have is, I, I don't know that we're increasing the sign area, and it's pretty hard. If, if we're going to stay back in the Stone Age, we should probably get a rock out and chisel out the sign and hang her up.
Works for me.
I know it does. But technologies are changing, you know, and you're probably right. We'll probably see technology change again and again and again, moving into the future, where pretty soon you probably won't have to have a sign, it'll telepathically be embedded right into a chip in you or something. Who knows?
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that if technology is there, and it's not impacting safety, and in my mind, it's not impacting aesthetics, I want these guys to make as much money as they possibly can in Shakopee, and I don't want to limit what they can do here compared to other places, and our, this is one way that we have to do that. And I wouldn't have a problem being less than a minute, but that's just me. Councilman Lehman?
I'll offer the ordinance 859, ending chapter 11 regarding electric signage as presented. Move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Do we have Councilman Sherman?
Not at the moment.
I'll second it, because I didn't have a chance to discuss it.
All right, Councilwoman Whiting?
I am concerned about the aesthetics, and I won't take your bet, because I know the Public Policy Division of the Chamber is going to look at the sign ordinance, and I'm not sure if this will actually cover all their concerns, so they may be back with some issues on it. But I think there is going to be some portion of the public that's going to have a hard time with this. So I'm not, I think we should try it, see what happens, and then we may have to look at it again.
Members of the council, I would just reiterate and note for the record, as I know that, that was pointed out, that this ordinance does count such signs against the current allowed signage and doesn't change the setback or the height requirements. So that remains static. The nature of a portion of the signage will change if this is ultimately approved. But that was something at the last meeting of the Planning Commission that we did further clarify, because there was some confusion about our original draft language, but that's pretty clear here.
Councilman Sherman, have you got any discuss, oh, Councilman Sherman, have you got any discussion? All right, we'll go to Councilman Lehman.
I, I see the potential for this actually cleaning up some of the sign clutter, because if, if you have an old sign that's up, and it's a, you know, paper sign or whatever, and it's old, faded, ripped up, smudged, whatever, these signs, when they change, they're crisp and clean every time. So I think we've actually got a possibility of having a cleaner image by doing this. At least, that's what I'm hoping for. I'm not a sign expert, but we'll see shortly, I guess. I'll be at Holiday looking at them, so.
All right, we'll wait for Councilman Sherman. You think she's coming back, John?
She's attempting to reconnect.
All right. Councilman Clay, a song, please. No, not, not right now?
If only we had a piano.
Play piano?
And a piano player.
Lehman plays a mean piano.
Does he?
I think we can get an app on one of our phones that he can utilize.
Maybe.
He's really not into technology. He's still chiseling on a rock.
Oh, I was talking about you, Councilman Lehman. A piano app. My wife has shown it to me as a former piano teacher. My thumbs are too big to use it, but.
I have to get up, break out my Beethoven and Bach and Mozart stuff.
There you go. I can't make.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I called the question. She's not coming back.
I'll think about it.
She's been in and out. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Oh, wait a minute. I almost, I said aye the wrong time. I am, I'm opposed.
Okay. And Councilwoman Whiting, you were?
In, in favor.
Okay. Pass is three to one.
Wisconsin Dells, here we come.
We'll be back.
All right, back to item 10C4.
Thank you. Take care. Members of the council, last time you have to listen to me this evening, then you can listen to more interesting folks. This is the item that we talked about earlier during the EDA agenda, the recommendation from the EDAC to re-implement the facade improvement loan program, and you have recommended that adoption with the additional motion to direct us to review it and bring back that review, I believe, January 1st, after we've had some experience for the balance of 2012. So that's the action that's in front of you this evening.
Councilman Lehman?
I'll make a motion directing staff to proceed with the reinstatement of the city's facade improvement program as recommended by the EAC, EDAC, and EDA. With the revisions made by the EDA to review, I think it was criteria, after, after applications are submitted and bring it back January 1st. Did I cover it? Is that correct?
I think so. I'll second that.
Second, Councilwoman Whiting? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, four to zero.
Again.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Item 10D1, MinDOT presentation on Trunk Highway 169, Counter Road 69 Bridge aesthetics.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll introduce this item, and to give a little background, I think we've all seen the layout that we're looking at, or the interchange of 69 and 169. You see the brief layout, schematic layout that we've been doing. So now, we're into final design of these improvements, which is a bridge and overpass with ramps, which would be over 169. So with me tonight, I have David Hall. He and Melissa Schultz, they are MinDOT architectural bridge specialists, the only two in the state. We're lucky to have them here. Craig Jensen of Scott County is back there, too, if he can answer any questions. Just to give you an idea what this is all about, with the bridge project, MinDOT does allow up to 7% of the bridge cost to be used for aesthetic treatments of a bridge, you know, dress it up a little bit, concrete treatments, form liners, different designs you can put on, railing, and really lighting. Those are the main items. And David here has a presentation. I'll bring that up here, and he, there's a handout on your desk, which you'll be going through. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave, who has been doing this since 1998, I believe, aesthetics. Longer than that, but he'll, he'll go through everything with you, and, and at the end of this, we would like to get some direction from the council.
Thank you. Thanks for taking up with us tonight.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Bruce said, I've been doing this for a number of years, probably 25 or 26 now, working both with MinDOT the last 14, and for the state of California prior to that. So working primarily with bridge architecture, and, and with that, we've been asked, at least by the Scott County folks, to take a look at your bridge and kind of look at what could be done here to maybe make this a bit of a gateway to the Shakopee, the city of Shakopee from the west. And so with that, we'll look at some examples that we've drawn, drawn up for you, basically three concepts. One that we'll look at here is the, the very first here is just a very preliminary plan that's been drawn up within the office that we work in here in, in MinDOT. It's a very engineering-type drawing, doesn't really show you much about bridge aesthetics, but nonetheless, I thought that might be a good lead-in for you to get familiar with the project itself. It's a basic two-span structure, very similar to other structures that you have along 169, quite wide, has sidewalk or trail on both sides of the bridge on Highway 69. The bridge is approximately 244 feet in length. The first concept that we'd like to take a look at here is really based on the existing structures that are already along 169, have followed pretty much the very similar lines and, and proportions, column type. And the only additional things that we've added here that you don't have on the bridges out there right now is, is a railing type that's not existent, as far as a pedestrian-type railing, because of the pedestrian traffic that will be on the new bridge. And there actually would be at least proposed six architectural lighting fixtures or units, one at each corner of the bridge, and then one on either side in the median, over the median of 169. So in the, it's basic treatments that we're looking at, again, very simple, straightforward. It's what's called a fluted rib texture that shows up on the upper wing walls that you see in that lower detail there, and gives you a little bit better definition of the railing and the lighting units. There's very simple recesses in each one of the columns that, just to, to break up some of that surface area a little bit. Again, this is a true life picture of your, of your existing structures out there. In the foreground there, you see a couple of the, or one of the newer pedestrian bridges that you constructed here a number of years ago. Concept two, we looked at some of the area here as we drove through the city. You have a relatively new bridge here in Memorial Park. This concept two was based on, on that design. The additional features here would be a different type of railing, still have the same trail and sidewalk on both sides of the bridge, and lighting fixtures. We introduced some concrete railing pilasters or posts as you cross over the bridge, and each one of those posts has a simple recessed form. And in that particular bridge, which we've shown here as well, is, is painted on surface in that area, in that recessed area for each one of the structures. And again, detailed out, very, very simple, as I said, recesses in the columns, each one of the pilasters, and then a simple block pattern that just created with reveals in concrete on the wing wall that's shown again in that lower detail. And again, a photograph, this was an early photograph that we had on hand, but the, the one on the left is, is prior to having the railing installed on the, on the bridge. The, the railing example on the, on the right-hand side is actually taken from another bridge that has a very similar railing detail, but the only, about the only difference is in the color of the railing. So it's basically a very round tubular steel railing. Concept number three is taking things a little step further. We looked at a number of the buildings in your community here. We looked at some of the newer development in the downtown, picked up the idea that there's been a number of structures constructed using the local Minnesota Valley limestone and also the Shakopee brick that's been used in a number of buildings. So in this case, we're looking at using for the, the lower portion of the bridge, what we call the substructure, is using a limestone form liner. We wouldn't use real limestone, primarily because of the cost involved with that. Limestone's probably four to five times more expensive than doing a concrete form liner that's stained. And then the upper portion of the bridge, we've incorporated, again, some, some fewer of these concrete rail posts, metal railing, the concrete pilasters, and then we've added in a brick, a brick facade that's actually a real brick material, but it's cast right into the concrete. It's not a, a full-size brick. It's a thin brick material that's available. We've used on a number of projects now here within the state. In fact, we were the first state in the country to use this brick on a, on a major bridge structure. So again, a little closer-up details here of the pier development, which would be in the median of Highway 169, same trails, everything else is the same, above the, above deck. We've added in the lighting fixtures, again, we've pretty much kept that constant throughout all the designs. The railing that's shown with this particular bridge is a railing that we term the St. Peter railing. It's one that was used for the first or second time down on the Minnesota River Bridge in St. Peter. So that's, hence the name, St. Peter railing, so. But railings can be interchangeable as far as that goes, but we chose to show that with this particular concept. Again, looking at some of your local architecture here, taken from your downtown development, using the, the red brick, there are a number of brick varieties available with this system, so it won't be a problem in, in matching up something that's very close, at least, with the local, local brick. And then another example of one of the bridges, this was, happens to be the first bridge that we did here in, in Minnesota. It's over 494 up in the Woodbury area, using the brick, brick design as well, and it's worked out quite well. So as I said, we've probably got about eight bridges using that product. So I guess what, what we're really looking for, and I guess I'll speak a little bit for, for the project. so it won't be a problem in matching up something that's very close, at least, with the local brick. And then another example of one of the bridges, this happens to be the first bridge that we did here in Minnesota. It's over 494 up in the Woodbury area, using the brick design as well. And it's worked out quite well. So as I said, we've probably got about eight bridges using that product. So I guess what we're really looking for, and I guess I'll speak a little bit for the project development team, is your, any questions or comments you might have, and hopefully that we can address for you. And also looking at your consensus for the recommended from the committee is concept number three. So with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. Council Whiting?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, this, on the Valley Creek Road picture you put up, on the right-hand side, the picture is, looks like the limestone underneath there. Is that that limestone form, colored form that you were talking about?
Correct, correct.
Okay. You know, that 69 is actually Old Brickyard Road in township area, and there was an old brickyard. So I like the concept of leaving, keeping that brickyard form. And concept three looks very attractive. I like, also liked the part of the railing on concept two that matches the Memorial Bridge. So you said they were interchangeable?
That would be easily done. We've done that railing on about three or four, three bridges, at least that I know of. We've adapted the design. Just for your information, we've taken a railing that's similar to what you have. And for a bridge like this, where we're over the interstate, we really strive to make things very maintenance-friendly. So we've designed the railing in such a way that panels can be removed. If something would happen to get damaged, we can replace a panel. But for the average person, just looking at the railing, they would never know. It would be, look just like what you have on your bridge today, here in town.
Thank you.
Council Clay?
I noticed on the example of the Valley Creek Road that's on the screen right now, it looks like a flower planter on top of that. Planter, we can't have that because if we had to pay to plant flowers, then that flower planter would completely ruin the city's budget.
Don't go there. The city of Woodbury had quite a little bit of money in this bridge, but they chose to put these urns up there. I can't say that it created a bit more of a headache for me to try to put them all together and get them mounted up on the bridge. But I take a lot of heat from the engineers for that. So, but nonetheless, they like it.
Councilman Lehman?
You're open for questions, so I guess the question I would have is, the 7% that goes toward aesthetics, can that money be used for maybe making sure the flooded 101 gets done?
The policy states that it can only be used on the structure that you're constructing.
Okay. Can we add a couple pounds of silver and gold to this bridge? Are we at our budget?
Your budget, as we look at this, and I kind of explained that to Bruce and others on the committee, we typically design for the, we try to design for the location and the setting. We try not to look at, just because we have 7% allowance doesn't mean that we strive to spend the 7%. But all three of the proposals that we have presented to you tonight all fall well with under the, with, below that 7% mark.
So would you be in favor of gold and silver pinstriping?
I'll apologize for him, too.
The last question I have is, is who do I talk to about the policy of the 7% that has to remain with the structure?
Who do you talk to about that?
Yeah, is that a MinDOT policy?
That's MinDOT policy, correct. And we have a cooperative policy that's been, that was developed here probably about, oh, it's at least 10 years ago now. It's worked out for all cooperative agreements with local jurisdictions such as yourselves and the counties and...
Well, I've been around the block once or twice, and usually the conversations are, there's not enough funding in the pot to do all the projects. And here we find ourselves trying to spend money that doesn't need to be spent. So it seems to me that that policy should be looked at, especially in the current economic times, to where this money could be allocated to projects that aren't funded, that are important, and we could get a bigger bang for the tax dollars that we get. So that's my comment. So I know it falls on deaf ears, but hey, that's fine.
Sir?
Again, my name's Craig Jensen. I'm with Scott County. I just want to clarify the 7% number. The county received funding through the SAM, I guess, the SAM application that we made, and we received funding for it, which was safety and mobility. So the county received funding for this from MinDOT. The county is providing a local match for the construction of the interchange. The 7% is 7% of the bridge, the bridge itself's cost. So there's an allowance for that, that MinDOT participates in, up to 7%. So, and the county will have a portion of that 7% as well to pay for that. So if it's not, basically what we're saying is, the MinDOT would participate up to 7% of that cost, but we don't necessarily need to be, you know, it's not like it's free money that we're getting additional on top of that grant money. It's just a portion of that agreement is a portion of that. So it really comes down to, you know, we could spend up and over that, but, I mean, realistically, as Dave mentioned, it's kind of what fits for the area. And this is looking to come in under 7% and fit for the area.
I understand that. I'm just pointing out that the county doesn't have enough money to do all its road projects either.
Council Sherman, which one do you like? I should never talk to her again.
I like the one, Woodbury. I would probably take the planters off, just for use of maintenance and based on the location where it is, but I do like overall.
What do you think about Council Whiting's thought to add the, I don't even know what you call them, decorative railings? Well, limestone's part of it already, on number three, but to match more of Memorial Park Bridge. You don't have this stuff in front of you. Okay, all right. Missed the last part. Anybody catch it? Council Clay?
On a serious note, the, whatever we do decide on, I guess, I'm not picky about which design it is. Number three looks a little nicer, but we might want to also keep in mind whatever materials or designs we use. Hopefully it would be something that could be easily duplicated a few years down the road when this general area gets annexed or developed, so that we could possibly use that bridge design in our architectural treatment to extend, you know, farther down a boulevard or County Route 69 roadway or something to help kind of tie that whole general area together around the, whatever design is used for the bridge.
We have found that as we go into a number of communities that maybe don't have a lot of, you know, preconceived ideas of their own. And we've worked with instituting maybe on one bridge, maybe on two bridges or whatever, but a lot of times it stimulates the community to continue with that theme or what have you. And I think that's what you're alluding to here. So we've, just to name a couple of communities, a small community of Painesville up near St. Cloud, Cold Spring. There's a number of other communities that we've worked in, and they look at this as kind of a, just an icon for their community. It's a landmark.
Kind of a unifying theme?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm hearing concept three with some decorative touches, as in on Memorial Bridge. Is that correct? Council Whiting?
Yeah, I'd like, do you want a motion?
I don't think, do we want a motion?
I think we need some direction.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve concept number three with railing aspects much like Memorial Park, and also keeping in mind the Shakopee brick color that's involved with the aesthetic value of this bridge, and approve that adoption for the 169, 69 overpass.
Councilman Lehman?
I'll second minus the planters.
There is no planters.
We didn't include, we were only giving, we were only showing the bridge as an example.
No planters.
No planters.
You can pull back on the panic. It's all right. All right. So you second it, Councilman Lehman?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Any other discussion?
I was wondering if Melissa concurs with David.
You guys did a good job. I put a lot of thought into it.
Just to mention, Melissa has been working with me now for about three years or so, but she's the one that develops all of the graphics and so on that you've seen in your packets tonight. So she's been a very great asset.
She does all the work, and you get to take all the credit?
I don't think it goes exactly that way, but I give her a lot of credit, so.
Good. Councilman Lehman?
Bruce, did we put green stripe on the bridges out here when we built them and painted them and put the railings on?
Yes, we did. I mean, we did do a little decorative treatment on our own. There are a ped bridge, which had a green stripe. We put some ornamental fencing, green ornamental fencing, and three green ornamental lights. The green being the color of the logo in Shakopee. We did do that. If I may, I would like to also add one point. I don't think it'll affect the concept, but one of the issues we will have, this bridge is not located in the city of Shakopee right now.
Yes.
We know what it's going to be, we think, but it isn't right now. And also, the power source probably will not be in Shakopee Public Utility Service area. County doesn't pay for power on the lights, so we'll have another power, bridge light power issue, I guess we'll have, on this particular bridge. So we'll have to work on that. But that should not affect, unless you don't want any lights, that would be the only reason why it'd affect it. So, but we'll have to work out those issues as we continue to work on the project.
Will these lights be LED?
That is an option. That is an option. It looks like it falls within our 7%. So we are looking at that, yes.
All right, any other discussion?
Do we want the green stripe to match the rest of our bridges or not?
No.
It's a detail we can work out later.
All right.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, even so, the aye from Council Sherman. Thank you. This is very nice of you guys to be here. I appreciate you going to this level of detail to meet our community needs, and that's wonderful. So thank you very much and the other MinDOT folks. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item number 13 is a closed, oh, council member reports, sorry, I was just skipping to the end. Council member reports. We'll start with Council Sherman, since you're up right now.
She doesn't have anything.
Councilman Lehman?
Let's see here. Didn't have a 169 corridor coalition meeting. Derby Days is coming up here, so I don't have that to report on. I did meet with the VFW about flags on First Avenue, and it looks like very shortly we'll probably be bringing something to the city council. I think we got it all worked out. Might even have it all funded, maybe.
Council Clay?
Nothing tonight.
Thanks for stopping by.
Council Whiting?
I went to the Chamber Visitors Bureau meeting and nothing to report.
All right, thank you. I had, biggest thing I had last few weeks is a scale meeting about, there was a panel about the media. Ms. Vicky spoke and did a wonderful job, and thanks for being there. As the committee that I'm on, the Scale Communications Committee, we also talked about social media and how to improve it throughout the county. Any other business? Item 12, seeing none, I request a motion for recess for closed session. Council Clay?
Move the recess for a closed session.
You have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, just, we have to state on the record that the closed session is to consider the sale of real property, specifically the downtown fire station.
Thank you.
I'll second it to consider the sale of property, if that's okay with the Moishmaker.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.